I'd like to welcome to the Town of Oxford Committee of the Hall. I'd like to call the order and I'd like to welcome Mark Rushton from six of the news. At this time, number two, I would like to, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by second by.
Second by.
Moved by Mayor Henry, second by Colonel. You all heard the motion. Any question on the motion? If there's no question on the motion, now break to the vote. All those in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
No, if you mind it, nay. Motion carried. Number three on the agenda, approval of the minutes from February fourteenth till twenty-four. Hearing no errors or omissions, I declare these minutes as directed. We'll move on to number four, Town Department of Court, Public Works. Presented by Nick Curry.
Thank you. Public Works team completed a following task in the month of February. Solved the street from the sideways sidewalk completed, increased monthly maintenance on machines, monthly samples, weekly water samples. We also cleaned storm drains in preparation for storm. I repaired water leak on Stanley Street, flood access road to wells, cleared fire into some town buildings, and we also cleared all fire items in town.
Thank you. Are any questions for Public Works?
What's on the agenda for this month?
Big thing during our street maintenance, bottles, grading the streets, gravel streets, and our power wire race are going up there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Curry, for your report. And I'd like to move on to the Fire Department. Presented by Bruce Wilson, Fire Chief, and Carl Kyle Curry, Deputy Fire Chief.
Thank you, Kyle. Since we're glad to be here tonight. So this year is before we started off a pretty busy year, fifteen calls in February, four N V As, three of those in our coverage area, one in a neighborhood department, five medical-related calls, one structure fires in a neighborhood department, one chimney fire, one call for flood basement, one vehicle fire, and two mutual aid calls to stand by another station. Five calls were in town, six in our coverage area, and four mutual aid calls in six neighborhoods. Just yesterday morning, I just want to touch on something as well. Yesterday morning, we had quite a serious motor vehicle collision down on the highway. We covered twenty-two kilometers of that highway for a small laundry department. That's very significant. So we were called out to a single vehicle, which we attended to. While we were there, there was another collision with two tractor drivers. Crew, we had, they did an amazing job extricating the driver of that vehicle. And they worked under some pretty serious and stressful conditions. We had to call in DOT, another D H S ambulance, and special hazards, patrol, about cities, a little bit of things like that. So just, I just want to touch on that because our crew volunteered, they're the only volunteers that were out there that morning. And they did an amazing job. And yes, that's what we trained for, but they did a pretty incredible job. The chief from the special hazards actually gave accolades to the members for doing the work that they did. But I just want to touch on that for a second. We are currently planning a wildland fire training course with the Department of Natural Resources and rules. We come up in the next few weeks, so we'll include some of our mutual aid partners. We've got two members that are continuing with their level-one firefighter training. Should be wrapping up this summer, I believe. And we are currently working on making some pretty good upgrades to our fire station improvements in terms of comfort center, making that more comfortable for people in time of need. Also, the past month, we've gained two new members, which is exciting and good to have. The membership now stands at twenty-nine. And we've had one member retire. That would be my father, Adam Rushton. This is the second time retiring. He retired in ninety-eight, rejoined in oh-six, and recently retired. And that gives him more than forty-five years of service in fire departments. Quite a feat, so. That's my report. Thank you.
Well, Fire Chief, Mark Rushton, I'd like to thank you for your important question. And I was going to ask, anybody had any questions for?
Where is recovery on the highway? From where to where?
So it starts, there's a turnaround just the side of the Springell exit.
Turnaround, yeah.
And then we go to where the, what is that, Monmarath Inn, sixty? Sixty-three, I believe, where the gravel tracks will underneath the highway, forward towards Westchester.
That's all.
Yeah.
Well, all.
It is.
We appreciate what you do, that's for sure.
Thank you.
And when it's out, we join.
I think he's officially done this time.
Any other questions for Party, Mr. Rushton? If not, I thank you very much. And I'd like to move on to five point three, Administration Report, presented by Linda Fong.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So over this past little bit, actually, there's been a fair bit of sickness in the office here. We've had some staff shortages. So we have a, I do thank our assistant. He did put a report together for us here. And just to note, I want to highlight a couple of things on it. It is submitted in the council package. But he had been actively working on our YouTube channel, which is going to have a more formal opening and promotion here in a little bit. But he had noted that there has been some views on the videos that he's been posting on there regarding our recent uploads of committee in the hole and council meetings. So anyways, people are starting to find the channel. There will be more announcement on that in the near future, but we're working on that. Also, we work together, putting together the application for proposal for funding under the enhanced road safety transfer payment program for call number four. And what we applied for is for a couple of ski boards here for the Town of Oxford. So just looking to see if we get awarded for that. But today, that's the reports that we have for administration.
I'd like to thank you, Linda, for your report. Anybody else have any questions for Linda? If not, I'd like to thank all of us for your report and your hard work. I'd like to move on to six point one, Council Committee and Boards Report, presented by Linda Fong.
Thank you. So I received the report from Denise Corey, our Chief Librarian for the Cumberland Public Libraries. And for March break, programs will be in Oxford from March eleventh to the sixteenth. And this year will be Swing Into Spring, Scavenger Hunt, and Lego. So check out the local library here in Oxford for those events. The programs remain free to encourage everyone to take part. So registration is required as space is limited. Also, in the month of December, for statistics, four hundred and five items have been borrowed from Oxford alone, just to show how much has gone in out of Oxford. And in December, Oxford Library offered, there was one in-person program with twelve people in attendance. So that's pretty good for a small town here. So the Oxford, in total, the Oxford Library had two hundred and sixty-five in-person visits. And they have an upcoming board meeting, April eighteenth.
Thank you, Linda. Six point two, Road Trails Act Committee.
Okay, thank you. So I think just a couple of weeks ago, I reported about the Road Trails Act Committee, about their meeting. But I wanted to bring it back again, that they are hosting. See here, we are hosting an information session to possibly form an ATV-friendly community. We need your input. We need the public's input. We'd like people to come out, share your interests, ideas, concerns, experiences toward the goal of forming Oxford into an ATV-friendly community. It's going to happen on Wednesday, April third, at the theater at six P M. We encourage everyone to come out. Right now, so we're at the public information session. This is not gone before council yet. We need input from the public before the Road Trails Committee puts a recommendation forward to the council for recommendation. So that's as far as it's gotten. If nothing's been drafted or drawn up, this is just collecting information to see if Oxford's interested in becoming an ATV-friendly town. We're working on what a bylaw could look like. We have ATV A N S, Barry Burnett, working with us as well, and also some key players like from the Trails Association and various people throughout. There will be a panel available that night to answer any questions and to talk to. There will be a question and answer period as well, and a small presentation of ten minutes long regarding this that is happening in other municipalities as well. So we want to put it out there. The purpose of the Roads Act, Trails Act, is to connect trails as well as access to services. Those are the big points on the Road Trails Act. Anyway, we want to put it out there that this is coming up. And so we're hoping that we get a good turnout and to hear everybody. So to bring your voices and share with us your ideas regarding ATV friendly.
We'll move on, Linda. Audit Committee?
Yes. Thank you. So I just want to mention that the Audit Committee met on February twenty-sixth, and the audit firm presented to the committee the audited financials for the Town of Oxford. So following this meeting, we will go into a special council meeting to discuss the findings.
Well, I'd like to thank you for all committees and boards that you represented for the reports. And I'd like to move on to number seven, Discussion Correspondent, presented by Carolyn McLeod.
Okay, we'll start with the Public Participation Program Policy. So this is a requirement. Actually, you received notice back, let's see here, this was in November twenty-twenty-three from the Department of Municipal Affairs and Housing, that it is necessary, in a mandate, that we have a Public Participation Program Policy in place as required as section two oh-four of the M G A. Also, a policy on engaging with abutting municipalities, which meets the sections two oh-four A one of the M G A. So tonight, I have a draft that's in the council package of the drafted policy that I worked with our planning department to put this together. Actually, they did most of the information work, just to say, I'm just presenting to you tonight. So the title of the policy is Policy for Public Participation and Notification. In it, we put the two of them together to make one policy. So the two required mandated items that was mentioned here are just the Public Participation Program Policy and the engaging with the abutting municipalities. It is put together in the one policy. But to note, when we were putting this together, the town council needs to have a planning advisory committee. So this will be something that we'll bring forward for the next council meeting because that will be requirement as putting this policy together. So it's about our planning and everything like that. So that's to come. But anyways, I just want to present that. That's all. This is the presentation. And there'll be more discussion at our council meeting regarding the policy. Okay.
Letter from last year, letter seven point one.
Next one, letter, no, it's another item. So we had actually all the council wardens, mayors of all of Nova Scotia receive a letter from Minister Lorr and Hellman regarding the coastal protection. I have attached it to the council package. So it's recorded in our minutes regarding the information that was shared. So on February twenty-sixth, the government of Nova Scotia announced the Future of Coastline Nova Scotia Plan to Protect People, Homes, and Nature from Climate Change. There is a plan. There is a link on that, that letter. And when you click on the link, it shows you the plan in place, what coastal property owners need to do, what resources are available for Nova Scotians, understanding coastal environment, global issue, and local climate action. So just want to let you know it's out there. It's in our council package for anyone to review. I just had to present that.
Are there any questions, Linda, on this letter? If not, we'll move to seven point three, Walk and Wheel Project, Public Meeting Announcement. April seventeen, Capital Theater.
Perfect. So this here is a project that we looked into doing, we started back in September with Jimmy's Office there with the Empowered Movement. And it's called the Walk and Wheel Project Proposal. And so the town, where the town has a desire to be a vibrant and active destination for more people. And it's also following our strategic plan of where walking is the top activity that residents wish to do more. The condition and maintenance of roadside and cycling infrastructure is considered a significant challenge to achieving physical activity goals. So the town seeks to make strategic investments of walking, wheeling, infrastructure that regards sidewalks, bike lanes, pedestrian crossings, et cetera. So this is a study that was being done and captured. So they have gone through various phases. But we are now at the phase where we need to consult with our community members. So with this phase, we need input on walkability and wheelability here in Oxford. So if you're walking the streets, you're walking the trails, or wheeling around, please come to our meeting at the theater on Wednesday, April seventeenth. We need to hear from you. We need your input so we can get an accurate plan put in place. Or we just need to hear from first experiences here, here on our Oxford streets. So that's another public information session.
All right, before we move on to our government, I'd like to mention the three public events. Friday, March fifteenth, there's a connecting culture. A day of music improve in the event. There'll be cooking classes starting at two P M. Tasting starts around six P M., and then some culture demonstrations and a pizza party. Everybody is welcome. It is also required for the cooking, you have to register for the cooking class and contact, is that Marina?
Marianna.
Marianna Nardi at Halifax dot Y M C A dot C A. To do, to do that. There is no cause to take part in this event for purposes to bring the community together and share the cultures. You do not need to pre-register for the tastings.
Tastings.
Tastings, or culture, demonstrations, or the pizza party. Then we'll move on. Then on April third, the Town of Oxford Road Trails Act Committee, the ATV A N S are hosting an information center for the public for you to input regarding the Town of Oxford becoming an ATV-friendly community. They want to hear from you. This will be Wednesday, April third, at six P M. at the Oxford Capital Theater. We also need the public's input on the walk and the wheelable Oxford study. There's a public information session organized for Wednesday, April seventeenth, at six P M., located at the Capital Theater. We need you to come out and share your experience walking and wheeling around the Town of Oxford. Also, to tell you, tell us how we will improve the streets and trails for active travel. We want to hear from you. Before the adjournment, I'm going to ask if there's any further business to discuss hearing none. I'll declare this meeting closed.
Okay, we are live. Hi. Good evening, and welcome to a special meeting of Oxford Town Council for Wednesday, March thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four. I'd like to call this meeting to order, but first I'd like to welcome, what's her name?
Alina.
Alina, who was from our auditing firm. She'll be joining at some point here.
I'm here. Hi, good evening.
Okay, first off, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Secondary, moved by Deputy Mayor McDonald, second by Counselor Canning. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving right along. Appointment of returning officer, I guess I turn the floor over to Linda.
Thank you, Bishop. So as per the Municipal Elections Act, the council shall appoint a returning officer, who may be the clerk, another municipal employee, or another person who is not a municipal employee to conduct all regular and special elections required under this act. And this is the Municipal Elections Act I'm leading from. Also, the council shall appoint the returning officer for a regular election on or before the fifteenth day of March for the regular election year. So we're cutting it kind of close. So with that being said, I have been looking out within and also reaching out along with the outreach to the community and conducted interviews. I recommend the council to appoint Manachi as the returning officer for the upcoming twenty-twenty-four Municipal and School Board Elections. Manachi has resided in Oxford for four years now. She works in Oxford also. She is active throughout the community, and she has past experience from working elections from her previous city. As for compensation, I also recommend to go with the same contracted amount we have done in the past recent elections of fifteen hundred dollars. With a stipulation, as history has perhaps presented here in Oxford in the case that on nomination days, declare that no election is needed due to an acclamation for an example or not enough seats filled, then we would pay a percentage of the fifteen hundred to the amount of time worked as there is a fair bit of work to be done following nomination day if it is declared that we have an election.
I move that town council appoint Manachi as the returning officer for the twenty-twenty-four Town of Oxford Municipal and School Board Election, being held on Saturday, October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and provide compensation to the amount of fifteen hundred dollars if a full election is required. If there is no need for election, then the pay would be according to the percentage of time worked.
Do we have a second or? Okay, it has been moved by Counselor Black, seconded by Deputy Mayor McDonald. A very long motion. I'm not going to repeat it. Any questions before we put it to a vote? No questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up, Town Draft Audited Financials of twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, presented by our very own Brittany and Brockman. The floor is yours.
Okay, hi. Okay, so I just want everybody to take themselves back a couple of years because these are audited statements from April first, two thousand and twenty-two until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. So it's a year past. It's nothing to do with this past year, but the year before that. We did have a pretty good year that year. Sold the landfill site, and we were able to improve our reserves because of that much-needed thing. So I'm going to give Alina the floor first. She's going to give you the consolidated view. And then I'm going to give you a little rundown view.
We'll do that.
And if everybody's okay with it.
Ruffin, do you need me to share the statements, or is it okay if I just speak to the statements? Have they been circulated?
No, that would be great.
Okay, just a second. Just get them open.
When you're looking at consolidated, just to remind everybody, we have five different funds here. We have water operating, we have water depreciation, we have a capital, we have reserve, which is related to as well the general operating. So when you consolidate them, all those entries are in there. So it looks very much different than the general operating budget that you're used to seeing.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. My name is Alida Mitchell. I'm a partner with Baker Tilly, the town's auditors. And we have audited the financial statements for the town for the year ended March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. And the first thing I'll walk you through is our report on the statements. So as you can see from this, we are issuing a clean or unqualified audit opinion for the year, which means that these financial statements are a true representation of the operations and financial position of the town as at March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and that these statements were prepared in accordance with the standards applicable for public sector entities. The first statement we will look at is the statement of financial position. So it is important to note that this statement is a point in time and reflects the financial position of the town as at March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. From here, you can see that the town had financial assets of two-point-four million dollars compared to one-point-five in the prior year. The town had financial liabilities of one-point-eight million compared to one-point-seven in the prior year, which left the town with a net debt of five-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars compared to a negative debt in the prior year, which means that the liabilities exceeded the assets by two-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand dollars. Sorry, is there any questions? I can't see. Okay.
You're good.
Okay. Then the next section is your non-financial assets, which consist of inventory, tangible capital assets, as well as the equity in the Cumberland Joint Services Management Authority, as well as prepaid, which amounted to nine-point-one million dollars in twenty-twenty-three compared to nine million in the prior year. All of this leaves the town with an accumulated surplus of nine-point-seven million dollars for the year. Any questions on the statement of financial position?
All good.
Not good.
Good. The next statement, this is a statement of operations and accumulated surplus. As you can see, for the year, the town had three-point-three-seven million dollars of revenue compared to three-point-three, sorry, three-point-four in the prior year, and only two-point-eight-six that was budgeted. At the same time, expenditures for the year was two-point-seven-three million dollars compared to two-point-seven in the prior year and compared to a two-point-five-million-dollar budget, which at the end of the year left the town with an operating surplus of six-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand dollars compared to seven-hundred-and-fifteen in the prior year. At the same time, it exceeds the budgeted amount of three-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand dollars. In addition to the operating surplus, the town also received three-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand dollars of proceeds on the sale of their proportionate share in the Cumberland Joint Services Management Authority, which is reflected as a gain for the town, which leaves the town with an annual surplus of nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand dollars compared to seven-hundred-and-fifteen in the prior year. That concludes my presentation for the night, unless there are any additional questions on the financial statements.
Anyone have any questions for Alina? Very well. No, no questions? Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm just going to show a little version of, just so we have a little better breakdown. Because I feel when you put all five funds together, it really doesn't give a true story to how we're doing or operating. So basically, the general operating budget that we have. We should go back one here. So this is your, we're talking about two thousand twenty two, twenty three year. And. They, this was the approved budget. And this is the expected year in, I have a lot of different colors going on here, I'm just going to go through this real quickly. So you get a feel for. What happened in two thousand twenty two, twenty three is we had a lot of house sales. So we had, we had more income than expected due to the transfer tax, tax certificates. Um, things like that. We also had non-expected ten thousand dollars from a grant that was awarded the year before. Before he had something doing, so anyway, there was a lot of unexpected stuff that happened, so we ended up with sixty six thousand more in revenue. We also had, uh, did not spend as much as predicted. Uh, we had. This valuation allowance on taxes, that's because we collected a lot of the town taxes, so we. Ended up with a negative in there this year, so it gave us a minus sixty four thousand for, for that, just because we collected so many taxes that year. We had a lot of really old outstanding debt um there. So we ended up in the general government with seventy five thousand less spent because of that, mostly. Um, fire department was pretty much on, they were actually ten thousand dollars under. Um, emergency management, a little under than predicted. Uh, transportation services, they were like ninety five thousand under predicted because we had a, quite a bit in our contingency fund. We had some issues going on, we thought may cost more. And we also had a good year there for salt. And the street maintenance, we had planned to do more paving and the cost been way too high, so then we ended up. Filling potholes, but not as many as we would have liked that year. Um. Ran out of time by the time we got all our. Estimates in, the. Um, arena was a little more than budgeted, they, there was a little more spent on the electricity than predicted. But basically, that was the only one that was up. And we needed to the bottom, um, recreation, five thousand less than predicted. So we ended up with uh, a two hundred and eighteen thousand dollar surplus, which is really good. Um, because we really needed that in reserves. I did have forty thousand that was going to reserves, but really forty thousand isn't enough to be putting into reserves when you're trying to replace capital items. Uh, that. Is. So just to give you an idea that we did really well that year on our, on our budget. And we're able to. Oh, we didn't, yes, there, um. So then to give you an idea how we did on our capital. That year. His capital budget is completely different budget and. You know, unexpected things happen there too. As usual, so this is what was approved by council. Um. And then I compared it against actually. What happened, okay, so this one was what was approved to begin with. We're going to spend three hundred and twenty two thousand. And all of that was going to come out of our capital reserve. And. So we did spend about that much, three hundred and twenty three thousand, but it, just what we spent it on was a little different than, than we planned. We did do the arena automation and get that finished up. We replaced the boiler here at the town hall, cost less than we thought. Uh, we weren't able to get any sidewalks done that year. We did some paving, uh, that was funded through the gas tax, a hundred and one thousand. And the trails, uh, we usually helped them out, we did that year for a capital project. We had to buy a public works van, that was like an unexpected thing there. And also a fence for the ball field. And uh, most of it, the only part that we ended up paying was six thousand dollars, most of it was covered by grants that was received. And monies from the minor ball association. So also the other project that we didn't have planned at the time was adding the sewer demental lane. Came in at fifty nine thousand, and again, that was all covered by a grant, so, but it goes in and out and. And then we had just water pumps, the two of them were bought, so. In the end, we ended up spending three hundred and twenty three. Uh, take that up there. Thousand four hundred and seventy nine. So when you're looking at how this all affects reserves. So up here in this capital. You'll see there's a hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and four worth of grants that we received. The sale of the landfill, we sold our, our own truck to, so that added a little bit to it. Uh, was three hundred and forty nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty five. So. And the income statement, the surplus of general operating, any surplus we have every year is mandated to go to reserve. And so we have a nice chunk there of the two, two eighteen. So altogether, we had a gain of six hundred and eighty seven thousand. Five hundred and eighty three, uh. The amount that we had to spend on projects was three hundred and twenty three that I mentioned above on capital projects that we did. So basically, this amount is what increases. Plus the forty thousand that I had in the budget for us to put to reserves as well. So really increased by. Four hundred and four thousand, which is great because we were not in very good stead when it came to. This is another little cheat sheet I have to see where we're going with our reserves every year. And uh, we have these indicators from the Municipal Finance Corporation that we borrow money for. For all capital projects, or not all, but a lot of capital projects. That we can't get enough funding for, we need more. So we take loans out through these fellows. If we're in the red, it's an indicator that we're in poor shape. We have been in poor shape, two thousand twenty, twenty one. We came up a bit in twenty one, twenty two. This really boosted us, got us to the green. Red is there, yellow is. Okay, but could be better, and green is where they like to see it, in the forty percent of your, of your budget. So basically, we're there. Um. Um, after two thousand twenty two, twenty three. The key is to maintain a reserves at that kind of percentage. Now, these are plans that we have and they will change over time, so this is all estimates, so. You know, uh, don't take all this with a grain of salt. Um, we haven't. Finished the year, we're almost finishing this next year. And we did spend a lot of money this year, we had a lot of new equipment that we purchased and things like that, but we're still in good stead. We're still in the green. And uh. As long as we can put money back in and you see all these are like, this is the starting balance in the gas tax. And then we get gas tax every year, that's a gas tax we receive. But then if we spend it on paving, that's a gas tax that goes out. So, um. That's the end. Balance for the year for gas tax. Now, operating reserve, we started with this. We had a nice chunk put in there this year, we have the, I'm going to change that to eight. That instead of two one nine, it should be two one eight something, anyway, it's close. And there's the landfill and there's um. The other grant we got last year for um. Uh. The.
State.
Yes. The S S G anyway, and the truck sale, so anyway, all that money went right directly into reserves. And this is the money that um. Will pro. Will be transferred, so. All in all, uh, you take that plus that, it will add up to the total amount that came out of. Reserves this year, and we have. A combined of one point four million, which brings us up to a. In mind, and now they fine tune this, their percentage might be lower than mine when M F C does it, because they might take out a couple of things that I have. So again, these are estimates. But it gives me a guideline to go by. And so I know we're in a lot better stead than we were last year, or the year before this, and uh. You know. So just saying, uh, it, that was probably. That was a great year, and we spent more money last year, so of course that's probably going to go down. Just take each year as it comes. Okay, so that's my spiel, I, oh, there was one other thing, I, yeah, no, I guess I showed you how it affected reserves, so. That was the one. Does that make sense, Alina?
Yes, Senator Van. To me at least.
We'll have to take your word for it. Does anyone have any questions regarding? The financials?
Well, I do, and it might be my glasses, but did you say it was green on that map up there somewhere?
Green.
Yeah, it was green.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something wrong with my glasses, Angie, I don't see green.
Not the one.
Anything over forty percent is green.
Okay.
It was green.
It was fifty four percent, but again, I don't want that number to be. Because M F C could come up with fifty percent for some reason that they take this or that, or don't, I'm not fine tuned in their spreadsheets, so. I, um, the, these are estimates and a guideline for me, so.
Councilor McDonald, or Deputy Mayor, I understand you have a motion?
Well, let's start it. The Town of Oxford Audit Committee recommends to the Oxford Town Council. To approve the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three non-consolidated financial statement. And the audited top. Consolidated financial statements as presented by Baker Tilly, no closer to court. Therefore, I'd like to make this motion, I move that to town.
Uh, that was the motion, what you just recommended.
Oh.
That's a second.
Yes. Okay.
I would like to make this motion.
Do I have a second? Okay, Counselor Colburn just beat you to it. Moved by Deputy Mayor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Colburn, that we accept as presented. Any questions? No questions, okay, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of that thing, please raise a hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, no contrary motion. No, no contrary votes, motion carried. Thank you very much, Alina, we appreciate your time, committee.
Thank you.
So there's another motion, sorry.
There's another motion.
Okay, I'm only even ahead of that, so, okay, go ahead.
Okay, now I notice, I moved that the Oxford Town Council transfers from the general operating account. The surplus for the year of twenty twenty two, twenty three. Uh, two hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty four dollars. And the budgeted amount of forty thousand, total of two hundred and fifty eight. Eight fifty four to the operating reserve fund.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Black this time. Any questions? No questions, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor, please raise a hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, I'll thank you, Alina, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, have a good day. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you, Ruthann, you made it clear to us. Moving on. Is there anything else regarding the financials?
Okay.
Okay, uh, we have an in-camera session coming up, for those of you not familiar with that. There's certain things we're not allowed to discuss in public, we have to do behind closed doors. There'll be no motions made while we're in camera, but. We'll let you know when we come back if there's any motions. Okay, I need a motion to put us in camera.
Oh.
Seconded.
Seconded.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded. Motion carried, and we're in camera at six forty five. Now, we're going to make.